Tonight, we're going to lead with the Serenity Prayer. And the Serenity Prayer is, "God, grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference."
Amen, brother.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. The pledge will be led by Councilman Gaines.
I pledge the allegiance and flag of the United States of America, the good republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Thank you, Mr. Gaines. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. There's a second by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a 5-0 vote. Okay. If the clerk would read what we are adding and removing, please.
To the policy agenda, we're adding 4BB ordinance to amend Section 9122 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to garbage collection fees. To the consent agenda, we're removing 5H Resolution authorizing payment to the Maritime and Seafood Industry Museum, adding 5K Resolution ratifying entry into agreement with SGK Landscapes for sand removal, adding 5L Resolution amending Resolution Number 72221, ratifying entry into agreement with professional project management for sand removal.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda? There is, by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved on a 5-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report.
The mayor is not here this evening, but I have a couple of items. And before I get into business, I'd like to do a proclamation if you would bear with me.
Sure. Mr. Leonard, please, go ahead.
I think her backups are all stuck in traffic. It's on? Testing?
It works.
I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a public health crisis that can affect anyone, men and women of all ages and ranges and orientations, ethnic and religious backgrounds, and the people in all socioeconomic and education levels. And whereas the Gulf Coast Women's Center for Nonviolence provided emergency shelter and support services for 1,384 victims of violence and has received over 11,000 calls to its crisis hotline in 2020. That's quite a record for one year. Reflecting the severity of the problem within the coastal counties of Mississippi. Whereas advocates, professionals, volunteers, and community members will devote the month of October to raising public awareness of the crisis of domestic violence, its causes, effects, interventions, and prevention. Now therefore, Andrew Fofo-Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, Mississippi, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. She wants to say something.
I would just like to thank everybody here in Biloxi and my student, my lovely city representatives. As a resident of Biloxi for over 20 years, I greatly appreciate the support that the city offers, our shelter in particular. Right now, we are at capacity. We've been for a few weeks. You know, as we said, we deal with thousands of calls every year. It's only going up, and we serve hundreds of residents of the city of Biloxi through our outreach programs and in shelter, and it would not be possible without the support from our city and residents. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alacia. Wow. 13,000 calls. That's more than I had about the drainage stuff this week.
I'm going to take over for the rest of the mayor's report of some folks who wanted to introduce. First of all, just a report on the emergency sand removal that the council ratified and approved last week. From Tuesday through Saturday last week, our contractor removed 100 truckloads of sand off the beach and out of the median, and making everything a lot safer, getting a lot of sand out of the drains, and we're appreciative of that. MDOT was partnership with us, the county partnered with us on that as well. And going forward, the mayor has been looking at some future plans over and above any sort of sand removal, and that's beautification of Highway 90 and the median. And as part of that, since that's our gateway, we've been approaching different groups to go into partnership with us and help with that on the funding. We're going to be talking to the county next Monday. And last Thursday, the mayor and I went to the Board of Coastal Mississippi, and we talked to them, and I'm going to turn it over to Kim Fritz with Coastal Mississippi and have her report on the results of the mayor's pitch.
Mayor's private chair, you know. Oh, God. It'll make you taller.
You do nothing but add prestige to the seat, trust me.
Thank you. So, yeah, so we really appreciate the opportunity because one of our strategic goals, main strategic goals this year, we voted on in our plan, is Highway 90 beautification. One thing we know from our research is the attractiveness and cleanliness of a destination, especially ours, is a, has a high correlation with satisfaction or dissatisfaction with visit. And the goal is to create strategic partnerships for beautification of Highway 90. And so, this was a perfect first effort for us. And so, I'm really glad that you guys brought it to us, and we're proud to be able to participate. Cannot wait to see the results. The other thing that we considered is, our research also shows that most destinations, once someone has visited, their perception increases in each attribute between 10% and 20%. In our destination, the research says that if someone visits here, the perception of our area increases 20% to 43% in each attribute. So, that first impression that we make when people visit here is very important. And word of mouth is the number-one most trusted source of information for someone when they're deciding whether to visit a place or not. So, all of those things will be benefited by this project and hopefully many others.
And...
Well done.
Yeah. We secured $200,000 pledge from the Coastal Mississippi Board. They amended their budget and agreed to pledge that for this ongoing beautification project, including some pruning, landscaping, and some edging, weeding, burning off some ugly weeds, getting rid of a few rogue palmettos and things like that. So...
I love the rogue palmetto part.
Yeah. The mayor is not a fan of rogue palmettos, but we're very appreciative of that, and we look forward to our continued partnership with y'all.
And we have some other, oh, yeah. We have some other members of Coastal Mississippi here with us that are really excited to be part of it as well. We have Zach Holyfield, our Director of Leisure Business Development. We have Pam Tomasowski, who is our Director of Finance and Employee Relations and is also serving as our interim Executive Director. Cindy J. Calvitt is our Administrative Assistant, and our newest employee, Content Manager, Christina. Just met her today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Anything else, Mr. Robin?
Does anybody else from the Peter side of the Peter and Mike Show?
Yes. Thank you, Mike. Let me just do, as part of the mayor's report, introduce Addie Stover, who's on the agenda today. If you wanted to say anything now, you could wait until your motion. Okay. Why don't you just say a few words in while you're here?
Thank you, Ms. Stover. Feel the seat first. It's not really hot at the moment. It heats up as the council meetings progress. Thank you.
Thank you. It is my distinct pleasure to present to, of course, the mayor and his absence and City Council, a proposal that I have been talking with various members of the city with regard to comprehensive restoration of East Biloxi. The city has made valiant efforts to improve the footprint that is East Biloxi. I am born and raised in Biloxi. My father was Louis Johnson, and my mother was Margie Walker, War II resident, most of my, most of my life. Went off to college and, of course, found my way into economic development, and so had the pleasure of coming home and looking at various opportunities that exist for the city. Again, part of economic development, as most of you know, is the comprehensive improvement of the quality of life. We hear many efforts that are going forward with regard to beautification and infrastructure development on behalf of the city. There are some opportunities as a result of many of the things that have happened, unfortunately, here in the city of Biloxi. We've outlined a number of events that have affected the city's ability to recover from various disasters and other things, economic impacts, for the city of Biloxi. And so, what I have offered is a proposal to identify funding opportunities that are current, immediate opportunities to improve the city in the areas of business development, community development, of course, housing development, all as they pertain to East Biloxi. Many of you know, you're hearing about ARP funds and also hearing about CARES funding. Of course, CARES funding is coming to units of state and local government, but in addition to that, there are additional CARES funds that are available at all of the 26 federal grant-making agencies to support many of the things that we, that I've mentioned here this afternoon. And so, what I presented is a proposal to serve the city as it pursues and develops a comprehensive funding strategy to identify external opportunities, those that are immediate, federal, state, local, and regional, and any private opportunities as well. The result of that feasibility study would identify, of course, funding opportunities that we would pursue, the creation of public and private partnerships in support of those efforts, and as a result, proposals and applications that would be submitted on behalf of this city toward, moving this city toward economic resilience. You hear quite a bit about economic recovery. The federal government's goal is resiliency, and so, that is the nature of my proposal. And I certainly appreciate the time to make this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stover.
The only other thing to report on is we had the decision, the written decision came down from Judge Schlegel late last night, which we provided to council, and I think it's on the website now, where Judge Schlegel reiterated that tidling leases are not necessary for the city to build and maintain its piers or its harbors. And we look forward to working and moving forward to get the veterans' pier on track.
One final note, council president. We're in day seven now of Operation Clean Sweep. Through these seven days, we've hauled more than 30 truckloads, 32 truckloads actually, of debris from wards 1, 2, 3 to some degree, and 7. And we've got better part of a week to go. I think it's been a tremendous success, and one of the things I think we've learned as a lesson in this city is that because so much of this debris is debris that would not ever have been picked up by Pelican Way because it wasn't eligible, but it's still out there and still part of our beautification problem, that we probably ought to budget in the future to do this several times a year to get the, knock down the debris backlog. And I mean, it's amazing. I mean, 300 cubic yards of debris that we've, we've hauled out, and we're only half done with the city right now. Anyway, so we're done, and my last note is, please, please have the Biloxi travel expenses, credit card spread across the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. I don't believe we have any departmental reports. So, we'll move to the council reports, start with Mr. Gaines, Ward 2.
I don't have any today.
Nothing from Mr. Gaines. Ms. Newman in Ward 3. Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Lawrence in Ward 1.
Mike, that's a great idea. Do we have to set up a line item for that to create a budget for, like, probably like we had this year?
I think we would put it into sanitation services under Public Works.
All right. And then, you have an amount that you'd like to put in there?
And the thing, and the thing we would do is, we would either, either do it on a schedule, say, twice a year or four times a year for a couple of weeks, or we would maybe save one of those, you know, use it against debris, clearing debris after a small storm, where if we don't expect FEMA, like Ida, where we didn't get any FEMA help.
Can you come up with a number and send it back to the council so we can look at that?
We'll make a proposal.
All right. We'll go for that. That's a good, good one. Couple things in there, like Cruisin's here. I know Kenny's happy. He probably got more hotel rooms. He's been trying to rent my house. They got so many people in town. But it's good, huh, Kenny? How was it this morning? Was it awesome?
It's been awesome. Despite the rain that's clearing out, and it's going to be bigger and better than anyone before, I think.
It's great. It's a great event. And I know we had a council meeting at 6:00. I make a suggestion, maybe next year, either not have the meeting at all or have it at 1:30. There's events going on right now that we like to go to, a lot of us. So, you know, especially me, I don't like to miss too much anything. But it's something I want y'all to think about, that y'all have a suggestion, we could have it even next week, just don't have one the first week, because it's always the first week in October, pretty much. So, that's just an idea thrown at y'all. And they have, the one thing, we have the thing in the city tomorrow, which is always great for us, and I talked to Mike earlier about that, I don't know why we have a time limit on it, to cut it off at 3:00. You get 8,000 more people, 10,000 in your city, you want to be in town spending money. You don't send them home at 3:00. So, I mean, just, you know, couldn't they, just list it from 9:00 to 3:00, something like that. So, it is, that's for the event tomorrow. And I don't know if, I think maybe we ought to look at having made an event in the city of Biloxi for two days. Most cities run two-day events. It's just another great day of people coming in, spending money, and enjoying themselves. And if you with the cause, they want to show the cause off. They'll go anywhere. So, that's always a good thing. Just another suggestion. And, let's see, what was the other thing? Was it? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Demming in Ward 4.
I make Robin happy all the time, don't I?
Look, I'm just extremely happy because I can't, I can't count on my hands and my toes how many times I've told you, getting people to Biloxi, they spend money in the city, that's a good thing.
Well, I'm following up on that.
It's finally catching on.
Not a bad thing, is it?
All right.
They're staying in short-term rentals.
That's right.
Say what?
All right. Let's not get carried away here, Mr. Demming.
Peter, did you ever find out anything about the language about the moral perpetuity issues in the, in those ordinances?
Yeah. We could take those out if we need to. They're, that was just probably left over from the 1959 code.
Okay. Bridge lighting, Mr. Leonard, we, I know Paul's brought this up, I've brought this up a few times. The Pops Ferry Bridge, how do we get that lit back up? And we saw the south side of the bridge is not lit. I've got runners in the morning running with flashlights. I mean, it's, it's just dark. How do we, do I need to get, do we, do we, are we responsible for those lights? Do we need to contact Coast Electric or Mississippi Power?
We are responsible. There are a number of them on the north side of the bridge that are out, and we're trying to get them fixed. I, I can't answer right now because I haven't talked to Billy Ray for a couple of days, but I know that he had, was looking for parts. They're, apparently, they're, I don't want to get into what kind of lights they are and all that sort of thing.
That's fine. As long as we're getting the parts. The south side was dark this morning and yesterday morning, so if we could, yeah, just...
These LED lights require, each single separate light has a little thing that kicks it, kicks it on and kicks it off. It's like, like you have in a, yeah, well, the photocell, yeah, but we're talking about the electric, and that's the part that we're missing. I'll email all seven of you an update on that tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Also, letter from the Secretary of State's office about the CPRA, the update regarding the saltwater intrusions. I think it's scheduled, the update is scheduled for October 13th, but they requested that the city limit their participants to three people. I don't know if we have any selected. If we don't, I want to be one of those three.
All right. I'll put you on the list.
The deadline is the 6th, I guess tomorrow, to notify them of who's going to be there.
It's, what's the date again on that, please?
It's the 13th at 10:00 a.m.
October 13th at 10:00 a.m. It's...
Is that a Thursday?
That's a Thursday. There's also going to be a virtual option, but I think right now, we only have one. I think Robert Wagle will be attending live. I'll probably give you my seat, or if two of y'all want to go.
Well, I was thinking, but I know Mr. Glavine's been following this closely, and I would think that we ought to save a seat for him. I know he's been on this from day one. So, rather than me go, I'd rather Mr. Glavine.
I'll just say, Councilman to be named, or how about that?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Mr. Barrett, Ward 7.
No. How mu, very brief, just one question. How long, much longer are the guys going to be picking up? I know you mentioned that we went into this week.
We added another week on, and I told them that I would look at the report, see how far they made it, and maybe add a couple more days on the end to be sure that we get into every ward. Right now, we, wards 3, 4, and 5 haven't seen them. So, we've, we've done a pretty good job in 7. As I know, that we've started in 6 at Cedar Lake today. We were working Cedar Lake area and working our way down to, to Pops Ferry and to the areas off Pops Ferry, and we're in the Holy Land starting tomorrow.
Okay. As of, I just have a couple of streets that weren't picked up as of Monday morning. I haven't verified if they were picked up, you know, during the day, Monday, or today, but a couple of streets is all that I know of that we...
If you give me those, we'll see if we can't double back. And as, I'm wondering, maybe we should have called this Operation Almost Clean Sweep, because we've got 14,000 residents we're trying to pick up from, and plus a lot of commercial sites, and we've missed a few.
Okay. Yeah. Well, that's, I just have those two.
You give me the streets. Yeah. I sent you a map earlier this week that showed where they had been. So, let me, let me update that.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine, Ward 6.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to kick off by first talking about Cruisin' the Coast, and, you know, as everybody has been tuned into, this is the silver 25th anniversary year for Cruisin' the Coast, and it is starting out, you know, quite spectacular. Rod Murigan and his crew down at Crew Central, I mean, the setup and the organization is, went pretty much flawless. And for those of you who don't know the history of Cruisin' the Coast, Jack Barrett was a casino executive for Casino Magic 25-plus years ago, and it was his dream. He was familiar with a event called Hot August Nights in Reno, Nevada. That's where he ran some casinos and was very involved with this event. And he put together a steering committee comprised of Beverly Martin at the time, she was the executive director of the Casino Operators Association, got Woody Bailey involved, who was owner of five Holiday Inn properties and engaged with other things. Gene Oswald, he's passed away since then, but he was a event coordinator and actually was the executive director of Cruisin' the Coast before Woody. And he did a tremendous job, along with Linda Hornsby and a host of other people, to the mayors of, and cities and everything that brought this event that we thought would bring about 500, 800, maybe 1,000 cars. And we have nearly 9,000 cars registered this year, and probably will go well over 10,000, almost close to 11,000 vehicles this year, which is, which is just unbelievable, registered and unregistered. So, I totally agree with Councilman Lawrence. We ought to see if we can convince the Cruisin' Committee to maybe hold a two-day event in Biloxi instead of a one-event sponsored event. And I'm sure if we just kicked up that donation a little bit, they would certainly, you know, consider that. The other thing, Little League football kicked off at A.J. Holloway Sportsplex in the soccer fields. I really, and it's great to see, hats off to the youth football, baseball also, fall baseball is kicking off. But we really need to, whether we do it in-house or hire an engineer to assess that entire facility and see what needs to be done. Those fields are really saturated. I know we have a lot of rain events, but they're still kind of holding water, and perhaps there's some sand or something we can bring, or maybe an engineer can let us know what it would take. But, you know, it's important to really keep these fields, especially, you know, the Biloxi Sportsplex in tip-top shape, you know, not only for the local community, but for these other events that are promoted. And I know we're really pushing to promote events out there more, have more activities. Eddie Lofton, the high school baseball coach, is real involved with that and engaged with us, and he's really excited about some of the enhancements we're talking about at the fields. But I think if we did a little bit of a study on what needs to be done, maybe we can lay that out. And I know we can't get everything done in a year, but maybe we can have a plan that over whatever five-year, six-year period can start, making sure it doesn't lose its appeal. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. I believe Mr. Demming had another question or comment.
I think we sent an email over about a sinkhole on Carter in Orleans, the corner there. The response was that we're prioritizing roads issues first. The problem with this sinkhole is that it's right on the corner of the yard, and it, you can see that the road beginning to sink. So, if we can just have someone go over there and actually address it to make sure that there is no potential threat to the, to the integrity of the road itself, I would appreciate that.
Yeah. I know a service request was issued. I think they went out and inspected it today, but I can't confirm, I'll let you know what the results were. That was my short answer, that, you know, we've got a long list of issues right now with all the water drainage issues and the potholes, and I'm trying to prioritize the ones that are safety-related, include the ones in the roads and so forth. So, that was, that didn't need to be a smartass when I said it, we're prioritizing roads first, but I think we went out and looked at it today, but I'll...
There are some, there are some cones, and it is taped off. So, if you'll give me a report on that so I can let the people in the neighborhood know what to expect. Thank you.
Yep. I think Mr. Lawrence had another question or comment.
Yeah, a couple things. One, a little response to Dixie. I'll go finish our term in when we actually put a tax number and a business license in the city of Biloxi only. If you want to rent a house in the city of Biloxi, you better have a business license and a tax number in the city of Biloxi, not somebody who lives in North Carolina or wherever. And I'll go for all the short-term rentals. By now, it's just an expense for the city. Second thing is, this team waste, what is it, who's picking up the trash?
Pelican Waste.
How do we eliminate that contract?
Well, we could do what Gulfport did and back out of it and not pay all the other people in the contract several hundred thousand dollars. That's what Gulfport did. We really, you and I have had this conversation before. I had to sit here week after week, and I hear complaints about they didn't pick up, they didn't pick up. And I want to know, has anybody called the number and given them the name of the address of the place that didn't get picked up? Because they're, they can be fined for missing. But it doesn't do us any good to sit in this room and complain about it. We need people to call in if there's stuff's not picked up, they need to call it in.
They don't answer the phone, I go over to you there.
That's what you've told me.
Right, they don't answer the phone. If they're not doing a job, there's no reason for us to be paying them anything. $300,000 a year for what? Anybody could just pick up this trash. They're just not doing a job. So we need some legal, because they've ordered the contract to me two, three times already. And what we need to do is the city itself needs to run it. Did it before, they can pick up the debris, no biggie. Same thing, $300,000 a year, buy you a couple trucks, a few people, and do the same thing.
Sounds simple, not so simple.
Well, it's simple enough to do, and it's simple enough for the city to handle. We can't do anything with them. Nothing. Not a thing. You call them, it doesn't matter. You fine them, it doesn't matter.
Have you called them?
Called them, I haven't, have not called them. The people call me. They call them. And if it was hung up on, or wasn't treated right, they feel like, they paid, they paid and fee to do this. And that should be taken care of. And they should be treating the people, the citizens, right. Not being rude to them. Several people called and they thought like that. And I told them I'd bring this up. So I'm gonna push it. Whatever it takes, they'd have to get on the stick, figure out some kind of legal thing, or him or Robbitt. You know, I don't care. It's time to change the system, it's not working. And we've got three more years of this. We just passed all that. I mean, you talk about that's another million dollars we're gonna pay them.
Hey, George, 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 if I may, just to add on to the subject. I called them, I can say that I did, and we actually had that conversation. And the conversation we had was about fining them, because you mentioned that they would be fined over and over and over. And we've had that conversation several times over in our community when I'm calling and calling and calling. I've called several times. So this is not a new problem, this is something that's been ongoing. So the thing that I'm looking for is either they're going to shape up, or kind of like what George said, we need to ship them out if they don't want to shape up. So thank you, George, for that.
Sure, Mr. Demming, go ahead, please.
Mike, with regard to the fine and the penalty system, how do we manage that? You know, if it's just that we're taking on good faith, that someone calls and they respond, and if they don't, we fine them, I think we need to have a more efficient process of tracking that. And I don't know how we do that, that's your job.
This is, this is a county contract.
Okay, so this is...
Not a Biloxi contract.
This is an HCUA.
County's responsible for administering this contract. And the County Utility Authority Board oversees that contract.
Who's on that board?
Which we are one of seven members of the board.
That's right, so we need, we need Fofo or whoever he designates to be on that board to offer some type of mechanism to track this, to make sure that we are either compensated for those fines or they're actually following up with every request that we send them.
I think another thing that's needed is I think this council and our public, mostly our public needs to be educated on what is allowed to be picked up and what's not allowed to be picked up.
I agree.
Because I think, I think we get a lot of pushback on, they didn't pick up my mattress, they didn't pick up my furniture I put on the front lawn. And there are just simply some things they're not going to pick up.
As well as putting it in front of a vacant lot, right?
They're being paid, we're paying $2, $3.50 per residence per week for trash and debris, for garbage and debris. And they just are not going to pick up furniture and appliances and rugs and mattresses for that. And that's, that's just what's allowed in the contract. I think we have to educate the public.
So how do we...
Now, what happens to the rest of the stuff that they don't have to pick up? That's our job to pick it up. And if we learned anything this week, it is, we need to supplement that $3.50 that we're charging our residents with some city money, tax money, if you will, to supplement that effort and pick up the stuff that's not in the contract.
So what do we do to educate the residents? It's gotta be more than B-mail. How do we, how do we actually get the message to the residents?
I could just make a couple of comments. The utility authority oversees the contract. If something's not picked up in my ward, if somebody calls me, I call my contact at the utility authority. It's usually picked up, if not that day, the next day. And I think, as Mike said, it helps if citizens call in. But as George said, if you can't get through on the number, I mean, I don't know how many of the folks in my ward call the utility authority. But like I said, if they call me, I call my contact, the utility authority, and it gets picked up usually the same day. It's not unusual to send a truck out that day to get it. The other thing is that people think that I can put anything beside the curb and it's going to be picked up. And a favorite location in neighborhoods happens to be an empty lot, if there is one. Somebody will start a pile, and by the end of the week, and I'm sure everybody here can relate, by the end of the week, there's a pile that looks like a small mountain. But because it's in front of a lot or a parcel with no residential structure, Pelican Waste is not required to pick it up. And Public Works doesn't know it's there. So education is a big piece of this. Now, the utility authority put out a flyer, made it available, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. And it just in a colorful, one-page format lays out where to put your garbage or trash, what they'll pick up, what they won't pick up, those kinds of things. As I think we all recall, the contract, if they're not picking up what they should pick up, the utility authority is supposed to be dinging them or fining them per cart, whether it's a recycle, whether it's a garbage cart or trash, whatever. So you've really, I don't know if you guys, I don't know who the official contact is at HCUA. It's just a guy I call, and I pretty much get results. So anybody in my ward who's watching this, and some of them do, I would say you've got a Pelican Waste number to call that I put in my newsletter. And some folks call, I don't know what their experience is, but it wouldn't surprise me if not all the calls are answered. Like I said, just with the guy I know there that I contact, he gets results. And I think you all know who he is. But I'm happy to share that later with you if you like. That's all, didn't mean to, yeah, Mr. Collins?
I just wanted to comment, because Robert mentioned, mentioned something about tracking calls. And with the, with the girls on the council, what we do is we make that call, we document it by emails. So everything that we've done, and even when I had that hard time and we talked about calls that wasn't picked up over, over, and over four or five times, we still have a record of all that. And the record of not attending to the issues we had, that's when I was making that big fuss about it. And you told me about the, we had a discussion here in the council meeting about the possibility of a fine. How do we get some type of repercussions behind their inaction, ability not to act upon what they're supposed to do? And so I say that to say this, we have a record down there at the council floor. When we call, when we email, and the person that we got in contact with. And the inability of them not being able to pick up the trash, so it's there.
So I agree, we have a record for when we call our councilperson because we haven't gotten some results. Now, like Dr. Tisdale, when I've called, I've gotten pretty good results with the exception of some things that they refuse to do because it's not part of the contract, or it's prohibited by the contract. What my, what my concern is, the people that aren't calling, you are calling me. People that are calling that don't know that, and how do we get the information to them? We're all politicians here, we've all run campaigns, and we all know that one mail-out's not going to get the information to the resident. So relying on the HCUA to send out one mailer to be available to our residents that hasn't proliferated any reliable amount of information to the receiving households to know this stuff. So is there some other way we can get the information to the residents, especially Biloxi? We could call the HCUA who's responsible for the entire county, and they're not going to handpick and care only about Biloxi. That's all responsible.
I think Mr. Creel does something that reaches all the residents. Don't you, Mr. Creel? Maybe we can do a public announcement in that.
Well, I think burying it in a B, in a mail, a B-mailer, it's just that it's buried. The majority of people don't read those things, except for maybe a salacious headline or something that's exciting on the front of it. This is, this is 2021, if it's not on a digital screen, it's not getting read.
A good example, for three weeks I've been getting calls about some debris on Delawney Street in Ward 2. For three weeks.
Right.
And I finally went over and looked at the pile myself. It was a pile of construction debris from a contractor who was renovating a house. And he was just piling all the lumber out on the street. Now, that's just not going to get picked up.
No, I agree, but that's part of that, that's part of that information. I mean, I think if we send out, I don't discount the value of a mailer, but I discount the practical importance of one mailer, right? That impact is not going to be very high. But if we sent out mailers maybe quarterly to remind them of what they can and can't do, the information will start sticking. Just a suggestion.
I'll edit my newsletter, I do that every week. I'll make it once a month, if it helps. Anybody can get it, just...
What's that site?
All the HCUA and tell them you want to get on my newsletter.
Council President, what's that site they can go to get that information off that beautiful letter? That beautiful monthly newsletter?
Right now, they can go to tisdaleforbiloxi.com. It's right there in the center of the page, it's been there for about three weeks. Thank you, Mr. Glavine.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I can't wait to get to my comments, and nothing like what we've heard before, but, okay. Everybody good with that, we can leave this topic, flatten that rabbit. No, it is a concern, I understand, it's an ongoing concern. Want to check with the attorney, Mr. A. Bud. Just see how the train mitigation bank is coming along. We were talking about an ordinance. And there happens to be something on the agenda later on, the consent agenda, which I'll come back to this on. But just want to see where we are on that.
You'll be happy in, I think, three weeks.
I'm happy.
The plant, yeah, the planning commission will be happy in three weeks.
All right.
But you'll be, you'll be at the planning commission, so you'll be happy.
Yes, I will, nothing salacious, I hope. Thank you. The second thing is, just, the mayor's not here, but Mr. Leonard, I know that I've, I've heard from some folks that they're not quite sure with this new and third-party administrator for our insurance. They have questions about the insurance. And as I'd said maybe a year or two ago, it'd be great if we could get a roadshow going just to, with the administration, somebody from the administration along with Cy Easterly. I mean, that's part of his job, that's what we pay him for. And maybe human resources, just go around department by department, answer questions. Because I, I don't know if, just from what I'm hearing, some folks are not quite sure and get very nervous because we're no longer with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we've been with them for a number of years, so they're not quite certain how their life's going to change. And I don't, I think it's going to be better, but we'll see. I would just encourage you to do that.
Yesterday, I polled all of the department heads to ask if all of their employees had received their insurance cards and was told they had. So that's the first step to make sure everybody's got their little card that they prove that they have insurance. I have, I don't have one of those cards because I'm not in the city's insurance, but I think there is a phone number associated with that card, so they can call and get information. But I agree, we should make ourselves available for questions.
I just think it should be scheduled, so that you hit everybody over maybe a period of a couple of weeks. But some folks are not going to do anything online, some folks are not necessarily going to call. And they, I think they want accurate information, that's probably the best thing to do. I think if somebody from either the mayor yourself was present along with the human resource supervisor and Cy Easterly, I mean, the fact that you are the mayor there lends some weight to the fact that it's an important enough meeting for y'all to be there. But also that everybody hears the questions and hears the same answer at the same time. I know it'll be difficult with fire and police because they do shift work, and it's going to be tough to catch some of them. But it's just, we said we were going to do that for the last couple of years, and then COVID hit, and things have been steadily improving in that regard. But I just think it would give folks an opportunity face-to-face with somebody to answer their questions. That concludes my comments. At this point, we'll move to the public agenda. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for citizens' comments. We'll permit speakers three minutes each to speak on a topic of their choice. Please be reminded that it's not a question-and-answer session, it's just for your comments. When you come to the table to speak, please say your name clearly so the clerk can record it. And there's also a sign-in sheet, take a moment to, I believe it calls for your name and your address after you've done that. There's a timer up here. The banner white of council clerks will hit that timer, it starts. And three minutes later, if you're still talking, she'll hit a bell and say your time is up. So, having said that, is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to address the council? Please come forward, Mr. Trung.
Long day. Start? Okay. My name is Jan Trung, and I have a property located at 204 Kearns Avenue. I am bringing forward to you a situation and more of a concern. Many, many of your residents may have the same issues. I was issued a citation for a privacy fence in my backyard that does not belong to me. This started in May of this year. And ongoing, you know, I tried to address this particular COVID enforcement officer that came out. I even cited her, the case law, that, you know, she's violating my rights as a, you know, property owner. When I did not get any, any results from this, I contacted the Community Development Director Jerry Creel directly in order to resolve this. The camera versus municipal court is the case that comes to mind. It's a reasonable expectation of privacy against unwanted searches and seizures on property by state actors and law enforcement, including building inspectors. This inspector overstepped her boundaries, and I specifically spoke to Jerry about this so that he could address her. Moving forward, I didn't hear anything from, you know, regarding this matter until I received a citation for a separate property. At this time, I was summoned for court in order, you know, in order to repair a fence that was leaning due to all the rain that we've been experiencing. So I extended, that property's located at 306 Magnolia. I extended it due to the weather. And at that time, she piggybacked onto this summons, the 204 Kearns Avenue property again. So again, I went to Jerry, and I spoke to him, I told him, Jerry, this is not my fence. It clearly states on the citation that the fence is the citation disregarded me. I received a fine stating that I did not show up to court for $400 for 204 Kearns Avenue. I showed to him, and I also forwarded to him by email, the court summons that does not have the signature of the deputy clerk on there. Every single one of these forms needs to pass through her desk, and it needs her signature on there, and it's not on there. My concern that I bring to you today is that there needs to be more transparency, there needs to be more, you know, just openness and readiness to provide a win-win solution. You know, I felt, I myself felt like as if I was bullied, as if there was some underhanded activity going on. activity going on, as if like, you know what? Go ahead and, you know, put him, put him in court, get him, give him the fine. And I don't know if your, your residents are experienced in the same, but this citation was sent to me for a fence that was not mine. And in conclusion, she zoomed in on a, on a, like a, a brush is some, that this, my property is adjacent to CSX and there's some overgrowth there. So she zoomed in on that and stated that, hey, he's still not in compliance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trung. Appreciate it. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to address the council at this time? If you will, just go ahead and sign in, your name and address, then state your name clearly for the clerk and she'll hit the timer and we'll be off to the races.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Garrido and I am a ten-year vet who is living on 14003 Hudson Crown. And the reason that I am addressing the council today is because we have a problem with the speeding in this particular street. We have had increased speed on this zone that cars have hit our, our mailboxes, cars have run off the road. As you can see on the paperwork that we're giving to you here briefly, you guys can see that we have had multiple car accidents in this part. And actually, there's one fatality. One gentleman died a few yards from our house. We are kindly bringing this to your attention so that we can find ways to mitigate the speed and the, really the level of irresponsible driving that we have in our, in our town, in our, in our street. So we kindly want to bring to you three ideas, but of course, we are more than willing to hear and/or to get any, any, any further ideas. But basically, we are requesting some sort of traffic calming with Jiggo bars, rumble strips and/or speed bumps. And in the, in this zone that we're, there's this, this document or this page that I'm showing, that we have shared with you guys, there's three, it's divided into three different zones where these type of devices could be placed so that we can mitigate the speed of people who are sometimes going over 50, 60, 70 miles an hour. We're trying to get out of our houses, it's difficult. We're trying to get into our houses and it's, it's, it's a hazard. We have children in these houses, in this area, and we are seeing this, a problem that can lead to farther fatalities and more incidents. So that to be brief. I don't know if I'm forgetting anything else? Yeah, finally, that's how, so I have my wife to remind me what I got to do. There is a kind suggestion also. We have the waste department passing through our direct highway. And there's a way where they can actually go around the area and not necessarily pass. I don't know if a letter can be sent to the waste management suggesting such a route. And I know my time is up. With that, I thank you, council, for your attention.
Could you spell your name for me and pronounce it again?
Sure. My, my first name is Daniel, last name Garrido, G-A-R-R-I-D-O. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Garrido. Anybody else on my left, your right?
Well, I'm going to take off my reporter hat for just a moment and be a public relations person. I'm Keith Wilson and I am representing First Baptist Church Biloxi tonight. First of all, I want to say happy, happy cruise on the coast to everyone. After tomorrow's downtown Biloxi Cruisin' Block Party, wanted to invite you all on behalf of the church for our event. Cruisin' at First Baptist Church is tomorrow evening from 5:00 until 7:00 PM in the parking lot at 1560 Pops Ferry Road. We're going to have a team cooking up delicious red beans and rice, as well as serving hot dogs. And we just, we don't want you to miss out on some mouth-watering white chocolate bread pudding. And that's coming courtesy of the culinary program at St. Martin High School. Cruisers can start arriving for parking as early as 3:00 PM and we're going to have overflow parking. If the church parking lot fills up, that'll be at the shopping center for the former Virginia College. And we'll have a shuttle bus actually available starting around 4:00 PM. And we just invite our city leaders and fellow citizens to come enjoy this free, amazing evening of fall weather, classic vehicles, a wonderful meal, and transformational fellowship because doing life is better together. Again, Cruisin' at First Baptist Church Biloxi will be from 5:00 to 7:00 at 1560 Pops Ferry Road. And if anybody who's maybe watching tonight, if you have any questions, you can please call the church tomorrow at 396-8500. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anybody on my left, anybody else on my left, your right, that would like to address the council? Anybody on my right, your left?
My name is Jane Shambra. I'm the manager for the local history and genealogy department in the Biloxi Library right down Howard Avenue. Here today to remind you about a couple of things. We're getting ready to do the annual cemetery tour. It won't be until the 17th and the 19th of October, one of the Sundays and the following Tuesday. In the Sunday, it'll be in the afternoon. And then on the Tuesday, it'll be in the evening. So last year, because of the COVID, we couldn't do the in-person thing. They actually found a way to do it online. But this year, they're going to repeat the same program, but you can go in person and you can see the actors do their thing. So basically, we'll have about 10 actors. They will dress appropriately according to the character that it would have been years ago, and they tell their story. And so every person has a story in the cemetery, whether it's a tombstone or a live story, but a lot of work goes into this, a lot of research, a lot of practicing, and the actors are really good. So basically, you learn a lot about the history of Biloxi. It's a great event because you get to hang out with friends, you get to meet new people. It's usually a great day because usually there's less humidity and, and the breezes from the Gulf and all this good stuff. So we invite you to come and, and see that. You will be getting or seeing flyers coming around soon about that. Next week, next Thursday on the 14th, the local history department will be doing a sneak peek in the cemetery and that'll be at 5:30. Basically, we're going to have a dedication of a new renovated tombstone. We're going to have somebody talk about how they renovate tombstones, which is very unusual. It's a specialist that does these things all over the region. And then we're going to have a couple of actors come in and just practice their parts. So it's a good way to, to get accustomed to see about what it's going to be like. These events are sponsored by a Preserve Biloxi Committee, which is involved the City of Biloxi, Biloxi Main Street, the Biloxi Library, USM Department of Arts and Letters, and the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber. So we invite you to come visit us for that event. And also, it's not a scary thing. It's a thing where you come, learn about history. It's not any kind of special organizational thing where you go to once, number one, number two, number three. You just go walk around and just hang out for a while. There's a lot of information in this year, this month, this month's B News. So there's a lot of things about the cemetery tour. Of this year's also some cool stuff about cars and cruising the coast as well. Also in the B News this month, they talk about the census for 2020. Well, that's important because the numbers in the 2020 census is going to depend on funding for schools and cities and streets and all these things. Well, we found out that in April coming up, they're actually going to release the paper census records for 1950. So as you know, they take the census every 10 years and, but we can't see the actual census. They won't show you the 2020 census. But in April, they're actually going to be able to go online and see the paperwork that went into the 1950 census. So why is this important? Because if you're doing genealogy, you can look up more things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shambra. Anybody else on my right, your left, like to address the council? Anybody in the back? All right, thank you. That concludes citizens' comments. We'll move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read, this is a first reading, if the clerk would read the ordinance, item A, please.
Ordinance to amend and add Chapter 18 cemeteries to the Code of Ordnances.
Is there a motion?
I move it.
It's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Is that correct? Thank you. All right, that brings us to item B, also a first reading. If the clerk would read item B, please.
Ordinance to amend Section 2335B6 of the Code of Ordnances to designate additional buildings as Biloxi landmarks.
Is there a motion?
I move it.
By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Barrett? Thank you. Let's see, we have a third first reading, item BB, that was added to the agenda. If the clerk would read item BB.
Ordinance to amend Section 9122A of the Code of Ordnances pertaining to garbage collection fees.
I'll move it.
Is a motion by Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Guines. That's a first reading as well. All right, that brings us to item C, which is a second reading. If the clerk would read that, please, item C.
Ordinance amending Chapter 2 for municipal facilities of the Code of Ordnances.
That motion was made by Mr. Guines and the second was by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, I think this is, bring us up to where we need to be. Ms. Leonard, could you give us a little bit on that?
I'm sorry, I was out working on the speed limit.
The ordinance, garbage collection.
Okay. I, I sent the council an email earlier in the week and I, with a, a big mea culpa. For those of you that are Catholic, you know what mea culpa means. So you voted some time ago on Resolution 56721.
Now, that, that was a first reading. This is a, this is one about-
We're on the next item.
This is the next item. So that, that was just the first reading.
Okay, well, so you-
But it wasn't a second reading?
I thought it was the second. We're, we're on the next item.
What we're at here, this was, this I believe was to amend the rental of municipal facilities because-
Oh, the rental facilities.
It wa, it was for, firemen were listed as far as, firemen were listed as far as who had to be available at rental facilities. There was no, it was to clean some things up and add policemen into that as well. So I believe that's, that was the only change. And also to allow for-
It actually increased the cost.
It increased the cost from 25 to 30 or 35?
That's correct. There's a fee for fire guards and law enforcement for a minimum of three hours. It's increased from 25 to $35 an hour. And if an event impacts a vehicle or pedestrian traffic in the immediate area of the facility that's running, the facility manager will direct the renter to contact the Biloxi Police Department, who will prepare an impact evaluation listing city resources required to accomplish the requested event. That evaluation must be approved by the office of the mayor prior to a final contract being issued by the facility manager. So this is a second reading. And by the way, I'd, I'd gotten the motion and the second backwards. It was actually, the motion was made by Mr. Barrett and the second was by Mr. Guines. But I, I don't know, Mr. Abad, if you wanted to say anything further on this topic?
No, that's it. I believe the rental agreement's already had policemen there, working at the areas and, and I think between Chief Miller and Chief Geiser, they've worked together on this language.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter, for straightening, straightened me out on that one.
Mr. Guines, anything else, Mr. Guines?
That's all.
All right, Mr. Barrett, any?
I think it's all been covered.
All right, any other discussion? Mr. Demmon?
I, I do. Have no problem with raising the cost to $35. It seems reasonable. How long has that been, 25, do you know?
Probably 10 or 15 years.
It's as long as I can remember. Not to put words in your mouth, but it's been a while.
Chief Davis said it's been a long time, but I think it, it's been, I would say at least 15 years or so.
It, it's probably time to, to increase that and change the policy to police. My only concern is, is the added paragraph that Councilman Tisdale wrote, read. The section says, "If proposed event potentially impacts vehicle or pedestrian traffic in the immediate area of the facility rented, the facility manager will direct the renter to contact the director of police." I think, I think that the onus should be on the city. I don't think the renter should be told by one person to contact another person, to contact another person when we're all part of the city. I think that we should have the ability to communicate within the city. If, if this thing said that the facility manager would contact the police or the fire, I, I think we should coordinate within ourselves instead of putting that onus on a renter to, to contact different directors in order to rent a single facility. The other question is, Mr. Leonard, the impact to the renter. This evaluation must be approved by the office of the mayor prior to a final contract being issued by the facility manager. Is that because we're going to look at these determination, determinations by the police chief or their designee, or the police chief or his designee to increase the cost for renting these facilities? Is that, is that the purpose? And I'm just curious because while I'm not saying it's unreasonable, I just don't know if this is a roundabout way to just say this is how we're going to rent, or should we just say the rent is, is a variable based off the cost of services provided?
Yeah, I, I think it's to allow some flexibility depending on the type of event. A typical rental of, say, the visitor center for a wedding, that's not going to have any real appreciable impact. If someone is renting the civic center for an event where there are 1,000 people or something like that, I think the police wanted to have some flexibility to, to basically say, help us, help us with who's coming, what time they're coming, so we have a kind of an evaluation of the event. And they're on the, they're kind of in the loop if they don't just hear about it while the party's going on.
Right. So why don't we just make that something certain for the renter? You know, Kenny, if, if somebody wanted to rent a hotel room, then we have a price. We have an algorithm that we can go and know that the price is going to be what Margaritaville says it's going to be for that event, right? So why not do the same thing? Why make, why not make it something, something certain for the consumer so they can come to the city and say, I want to do an event at the civic center and I'm going to have this many people? And then at that point, we should have something that says, that's going to cost this. I, I think it'd be much more effective in renting a facility than say, well, it's going to cost this, but hold on, call this person and see what he says, then call this person and see what he says, then we'll try to figure out how much we're actually going to charge you. I think we should be able to determine that number. We have enough experience. We've been here long enough. And I think we can provide those types of fundamental evaluations prior to a renter requesting to use a facility.
Right. We're, we're not really changing the fee structure of what the police would charge for being by the hour. This was added and, and coming later, this week, for example, we had all the different departments meet and we're trying to talk about how do we handle these big events in the future and, and how is that, how is that done for a special event? So there might be some later discussion that y'all would look at and vote on as far as certain events, if there would be fees associated with certain events. But this is not really changing the fee structure. But this is not really changing the fee structure. It's just too...
It sounds like a roundabout way to handpick what we're going to approve and what we're not going to approve. And I just, I can see in this a whole bunch of ways to misuse or misread the language to be used for a certain benefit, when I think we know what events encumber, and we should be prepared for those events beforehand. I don't think that we should use any evaluation for any various renter. We should have the same structure for all renters.
I think that... We do have a fee structure for all renters, and in some cases, it has a, it has an option for small business slash 501(c)(3)Cs that can prove who they are, and they get a special rate. Those are all set up. Those rates are established. Beginning of each year, we do, for the visitor center and so forth.
But that's, the word you just used, "established," is what I want to hear. The problem that I see in this is that we are contacting people, and then we're evaluating situations before we determine approval, and that's what scares me.
Chief Deback, go out, see, you're poised to retort.
The main purpose of this is mainly for city facilities. Right now, it's required by ordinance that the fire chief and the police chief determine if fire guards or police officers are needed for the event, and then the quantity of police officers or fire guards needed for the event. In the past, it has been $25 an hour. In this new ordinance, we're looking at $35 an hour. And it's not to determine, I know what you're saying about the writing of it, but it's not to determine whether to have the event, if the, if Sherry decides to rent out a facility or something like that, that's, the renter and the rentee, that's between them. We're just more so concerned about knowing about the event, so we can have the proper coverage there. And in the past, no fault of anybody's, there's been events that we just didn't know about. So at the last minute, we had to find a police officer or a fire guard to go to the event.
So the last sentence in the paragraph ends with the Office of the Mayor prior to final contract being issued by the facility manager. So that's, that's the one thing that leads me to my uncertainty, right, of how, if what you're saying is true, then that wouldn't be necessary, right? If it's, if the decision is between the renter and the rentee, and when you referred to Sherry Bell as being the rentee and not the city, which is the mayor, so to speak, is the executive of the Office of Administration, then it wouldn't require that last step. It seems like the communication has to be within us, and it should be irrespective of the renter. And if we don't have the manpower to handle a facility, then our directors should know this and should not allow that renter or that facility to be rented, period, right?
Right, and that's why the contract, and the way it reads, is that the chief of the Fire Department, chief of the Police Department, you know, determines whether or not fire guard or police officers needed, and then the quantity thereof that would be needed. That's just part of the contract process, to determine whether or not everything's going to be covered properly, and if we can, if the city can rent that facility for that event, have all the proper things covered liability-wise.
There, I believe you said earlier, there are times, or there are events that occur in the city that the Police Department and the Fire Department are unaware of.
Yes, sir.
And it may be, I mean, we hear this a lot with different topics. Folks come in, they want to do something, a business or whatever, mobile food carts, for example, and they just roll in, and "Nobody told me I needed a permit. Nobody told me I couldn't set up here." So, I mean, that's not exactly what we're talking about here, but from what you said, the Police and Fire Department have always basically, A, all you want to know is what's occurring where, and to be sure that it's appropriately supervised by the fire watch, firefighter on duty, and if a police officer is required, and how many, I would assume based on the size of event. So nothing's really changing there, except the hourly rate, I think, is what you said. There are two other pieces. One is educating the public on this.
Yes, sir.
Because a lot of folks will tell you, "I didn't know I had to do this." And I think we've all used that excuse sometimes. I'm not knocking it, but it gets old after a while. And the second is the timeline. If I want to have an event next week, I've got to see somebody, the facility manager, to get the agreement going, and then if Mr. Demming says that facility manager should contact you all, Police and Fire, to let you know, this would be that the rentor contacts you. My guess is that if there's reasoning as to why you need more than one fire official and one, more than one law enforcement official, I'd prefer, if I was the renter, that you tell me that and why. Because if you, I guess you would tell the facility renter, who tells the rentee, who wants to know why, which means the facility rentor may or may not have a written explanation, usually it is. But I guess my point is, it's going to be cumbersome, no matter what you do, but there's a timeline involved. So if you wait, if you, if you, they came to you today and said, "Hey, we want to rent this facility, and we've got a birthday party Friday, and we're expecting 150 people," well, maybe you need somebody there, maybe you know, but you may not if the mayor's required to sign something in there. Sometimes that involves an additional time. So, I mean, those are my concerns.
Yes, sir. And like Peter said, we had a meeting, and several of those things have been addressed with suggested proposals and so forth that you'll see in the future. Dealing with timelines and stuff, you had mentioned food trucks. So not necessarily, police need to be there. It was a food truck event back in May. We found out the day before. Well, for food trucks, of course, the Fire Department has to inspect them first. That wasn't done. We found out about the day before, so we didn't have time to properly prepare. Ended up being a little bit of a traffic issue down there.
Chief, Deback, let's not confuse the situation. That's a fire truck that can roll in, and, I mean, that's a food truck that can roll and roll. We're talking about city facilities. This is municipal buildings that we're talking about. We should be able to, at some point, just have an application that fills out all the questions that you guys would have, how many people, locations, and you guys should know, if I have, if I've got 100 people, we need X amount of officers. If we're going to X amount of people, we need X.
Getting that, that's what the meeting was about, and there's other proposals that are, that Peter's helping us with, that'll be coming forward, that aren't in this ordinance, but are in other ordinances. So that's coming, and we all got together, put our heads together, and figure out what's the best way so we can be all on the same sheet.
Right, so if that's the way this is going to work, these are functions of the city, so that would be a function of the administration, and if there's nothing really changing, we wouldn't need an entire new paragraph put into an ordinance. That's what I'm saying. There's a purpose for this ordinance, but you guys have the authority to construct, to supervise, maintain, and control, direct, whatever you want to call the administration. That's an internal function. It's not an ordinance requirement unless there's another purpose for it. And there is no other purpose for it unless you're using this as a, some form of mandated way to evaluate each individual renter. And I just can't understand why it's in there. If you guys can do that, and you have the authority to do that, and we can come up with ways to rent things that are more efficient, this whole new paragraph plugged in is, it's inefficient. It's just, it doesn't need to be there. It's irrelevant. It doesn't need, we don't need to have renters contacting other department heads when we should be communicating with ourselves for the city of Biloxi. We're supposed to be setting the example on the coast for how cities run, and we have to run more efficiently than what this ordinance suggests we should be running. We are far more advanced than what I think this paragraph alleges us to be. I...
We get that. We get a calendar a month ahead of time with the, with the contract, and then part of that contract is the law enforcement, and fire gets theirs, so that we can go ahead and plan how many officers needed. The number of officers is based off the quantity of people, number of people, whether there's alcohol. There's several factors that go into it. But we do get that from the department heads to our department, contracts, so we can go ahead and plan for the month out.
So if I put that on an application, what's the necessity of me calling you directly to tell you what I put on that application, or me calling Chief Davis to tell him what I put on that application?
Sometimes there's certain details that we have to know specifically from the person, or sometimes things change that's not in the application. That would be the purpose of that personal contact, so we can provide the best service to them.
Well, I think that's, I don't think that's an ordinance function. I think that's just a function of our service. I think they should have a contact, we should have a required contact on that application that allows you to call them and ask them if there's any extenuated circumstances that maybe they didn't prepare for, or you didn't prepare for. Again, function of the ordinance is to give us a legal guideline for how we run the city, and I don't think that's necessary or even appropriate for an ordinance. But I'm only one of seven, right?
Yes, sir.
But regardless of how I feel about that, I support a $10 increase per hour on officers that haven't seen that in a long time. And I even like, I even like the minimum of three hours. No one wants to waste their time doing an event for one or two hours. So I do support those updates to this ordinance. However, I can't support C, and so if I vote against this, it's in no means voting against the police officers or the Police Department. It's voting against this inefficient added paragraph.
So after, so after we finish discussion, maybe I'll come back to the gentleman if he has an amendment to offer.
I will have an amendment to offer.
All right, any other discussion on this? Mr. Glavin, Mr. Barrett, anything?
I want to ask a question. You can do whatever you want. The chief, both of y'all, 1,000 people, one of the carnival balls, how many policemen and firemen have to be there?
You said 1,000 people?
Yeah, the carnival balls.
Usually we'd have three to four police officers there. Usually we'd have three to four police officers there, especially if it's something that includes alcohol.
Four police officers, four firemen?
No, normally, there'd be one fireman.
Right, so...
They add a fireman for every hundred.
So just, just to increase cost to renter, $240 more just for the police and fire?
Yes, sir.
At eight, at four each?
Yes, sir.
So that's a pretty, you know, we don't want to lose the carnival balls that grew up to the Coliseum, you know, so I don't know. You've got to look at the expense, how much they make. You know, I'm, 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 I'm,
So we just looked at all those different factors that come up with the 35 an hour.
Right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Glavine?
I'll just make one comment, listen to everything, and I appreciate Councilman Demming's input, certainly. It may be irregular for, to put some of this language in an ordinance, but I think the polite way, I think what I'm hearing between the lines is sometimes, even though there's a contractual negotiation process outside of the ordinance, this is to try to catch some things that you get caught off guard last second, and to strengthen it with, through the ordinance, may help catch some of these things that, in the long run, in the public, for the public good and safety, I think it may make sense for now, until we can get our, get it all together. I understand exactly where you're coming from, but I think that's what the intent of putting this maybe irregular language in here.
And look, I don't disagree with, with what you're saying, however, that's still a policy issue, and the only way it's gonna strengthen it is if the administration enforces it, which would be the administration enforcing the administration, which is redundant saying it has to be an ordinance or just a policy. So I'd like to make an amendment. I would like to amend ordinance 4C to strike paragraph, section 2-14-5, other conditions, subsection C.
Let me be sure I have that.
And I would love to see, you know, something else that, to address this, but we don't really need to. The city can do that. You guys are the directors of all the departments, the mayor's the director of all the departments. If he requires you, present him with a contract for every event, so he can micromanage every single event, then do that. But I think it's highly inefficient for the mayor to have to oversee and approve every contract that Sherry Bell decides to initiate. You know, I think that would be more of a, more appropriate to, to address the issues that are causing a need for something like this. But unfortunately, the mayor's not here. But Mike doesn't let anything slide. The Marine in him will retain this forever.
Let me, if you could, repeat your amendment.
My amendment would be to strike subsection C of section 2-14-5.
Subsection C of 2-14-5, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's the proposed added paragraph.
Gotcha. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Demming to strike that portion, as he noted, that's section C under conditions 2-14-5. Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a second by Ms. Newman. Any additional discussion? Call for the question then. All in favor of the amendment to strike, basically that verbiage about the mayor approving the final contract for the facility? All in favor of that amendment to strike that portion? All against? Okay, it is approved on a 4-3 vote. So we're now looking at voting on the ordinance, and recall that that portion was just stricken. Any other discussion on this ordinance? Okay, all in favor of ordinance, excuse me, of the ordinance amendment as presented? All opposed? That was a 7-0 vote on the amended ordinance. All right, that brings us to resolutions. Item D, if the clerk would read item D, please.
Resolution approving a master plan update and conditional use to authorize the addition of 25,000 square foot storage building and 27 space RV park for Treasure Bay Casino.
All right, there's a motion by Ms. Newman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Ms. Newman? Okay, Mr. Barrett, anything? Any other discussion or questions?
That's a good thing.
Okay. Mr. Crell, I do have just a couple of observations. Basically, a storage building going on the east side of the casino near the north end of the lot, and a 27 space RV park on the west side. And the number of live oaks being removed is 62, I believe, and they give you the size of the oaks. And the replacement, the tree replacement ratio is three to one.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So if they're removing 62 trees, multiply that by three, and they should be, in a perfect world, they'd be planting 186.
That's correct.
Two-inch, is it two-inch? I think.
It's a, I think it's actually bigger than that right now. Yes, sir.
But they'd be planting 186 trees somewhere on the casino property, and I'm sure in the future, they would plan to develop other parts of that property in some form or fashion, which means they're gonna be cutting down at some point when they plant 186 trees somewhere on that property.
Even under the, even under the current ordinance, they have the right to plant them on their property, or they can donate them to the city.
Right.
That's covered even under the existing ordinance, and then the tree committee can work with the city to choose the locations to place those.
Right, which, which leads me to the tree mitigation ordinance that we're working on, and that's gonna be coming to the planning commission?
Yes, sir, at the end of this month.
In a few weeks, and I just want to make the point that rather than the trees themselves, it would be great if they could write a check for the value of those trees to be placed in the tree mitigation bank.
Yes, sir.
That's coming down the road. That would give everybody a lot more flexibility and meet the requirements to reforest with protected trees, what we're losing in protected trees.
Yes, sir. The good, the good part about that is that the payment could be made right up front instead of, you know, we're in a situation now where the project is ready to go, it's ready for a CO, but it's not really the right time to plant trees, the right time of the year. So we get into a delay, and then we have to go back out there. What this would do is allow them to just write a check. We issue them the CO, and then the city and the tree committee determines where those trees go.
I have no idea what 186 live oak saplings would cost, but I bet Mr. Glavine's given me that they're, it's pretty hefty. I don't, I don't know what they run. If they're 10 bucks each, that's 1,860 bucks. If they're 100 bucks each, it's 18 grand.
Plus to install them.
Yeah. So anyway, but it'd just be a lot, you know, that's the only point I wanted to make. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? There being none. All in favor of the resolution as presented? All opposed? It's approved on a 7-0 vote here. Brings us to item E. If the clerk would read item E, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize five small cell towers upon five locations within the city of Biloxi right of ways.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moving.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Lawrence?
Peter, you probably did all this, with all these polls and putting up, what are you, is this all Biloxi property you're dealing with?
These are, they're in certain areas, at or near the right of ways, and we've been kinda going back and forth on the best way to implement this for probably two years now. The city has a small cell ordinance that was passed about a year and a half ago, and sort of what has helped us along in the breakthrough of this is, we had an application of where, say, a tower, and these towers are designed to handle overflow capacity. They're not new, they're not like the strength of something on top of a water tower. These are to supplement what's existing for the customers, and then that allows the reception to be better, that allows there to be additional capacity for the main towers. But the breakthrough here was to community development, working with them and determining, maybe, this doesn't need to be right at the corner of an intersection. We have a landscaped area in the, towards the back of the property where we could put this tower, and it'd get the same reception. So I think all of these have been, the locations have been approved by Jerry's department, and I'll turn it over to him if he's got any further.
Essentially, they've got some dead spots in East Biloxi. These will be located on the right of way. They don't look like cell towers, they mainly look like lamp posts. And what Eric and I did was go out and actually look at the spaces where the dead zones were, and determine where the best place to put them, where they kind of blended in with the, with the landscape. And we believe that we picked the right spots for them. And if you, if you have specific questions about the way these things operate, Mr. Michael Walker's in the back of the room, and he's here to answer any questions you might have.
My question, you're talking about right of ways, are we dealing with any pipes, underground cable, anything? Right of ways, they use the right of ways for underground work.
Uh huh.
So what do you have? Y'all check that out?
Yes, sir. The plans are submitted, the engineering department looks at them to make sure that they're not interfering with any of the utilities that are, that are there already. And once that happens, then we go ahead and bring it before the planning commission and the city council, because this is a conditional use.
And what kind of, how do y'all charge them? Does they?
A fee, what kind of a fee?
Say again?
What kind of a fee are they, are we charging for it?
There's an application fee, and then a yearly rental fee. It's in the range of $270 per tower a year, but these rates are set by the FCC. They're, they're much lower than our normal rental rates, but that's set by federal mandate to encourage small cell use. So the, the fees we're charging are the maximum we can charge under the federal regulations.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Glavine?
I've got a little bit of experience with these cell towers and everything, maybe not these supplemental ones, but we've been successful in the past by negotiating the fee based on the FCC, and then the owner of these are responsible, or we've negotiated them being responsible for the utilities for the electricity. Have we done that in this case as well?
Right.
Over and above the, the fee that's being charged by FCC?
Correct. AT&amp;T is responsible for our utilities.
Okay. Just, a lot of times, businesses miss that, so that's, it's not a lot of money, but it's a little bit. That's all I have.
Any other discussion on this item, small cell towers? All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented? All opposed? It carries on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Barrett? All right, let me start on, with Mr. Glavine. Mr. Glavine, questions about any items on the consent agenda?
I have none.
Mr. Barrett, any questions?
Nothing.
Mr. Demming, any questions?
Yeah. On, I'm sorry, I think it was a D, the one that's, the coordination center, the CARES Act money.
It's gonna be item C.
What is it?
Item 5C, the resolution executed funding agreement dealing with CDBG.
Okay.
Tell me about what this plan is, as I was reading through it, it mentioned housing, and then coordination centers and, and things like that, and I think it's roughly a million dollars, like 200 and some's been already allocated, and there's a potential 700 and something else being allocated. But this million dollars to, I don't remember the group that it's, that.
Yeah, I, I wrote the council a note about this earlier today. As you may remember, we got an initial dose of money to use for homeless, homeless, finding apartments and so forth for homeless. This is a second dose of that money, and in the email that I sent you, which I was just looking for, I thought I had it here. They've spent about 50 grand so far of the initial amount of money.
Right.
And this is an additional dump from us CARES Act money for that same program, for putting homeless people into apartments, temporary housing and so forth. And we're told that they, they plan to have it all spent by the end of the calendar year.
Who, there was, I saw a name, the group that's running this.
The original, the original dump was like $270,000, and then, and now this is a second increment of the money coming down from Jackson for that program. It's, this is supplemental to what our normal CBDG money is.
It's the, is it the Open Doors Foundation?
I believe so.
Is there any way to get?
Okay, found the email. $272,000 CARES Act award to, for community development block grant efforts to provide housing to homeless. Round one, 272,000. This is round two, 722,000 for the same program.
Now, this is none of our money, this is federal money being.
It's federal money, it's community development block grant from HUD, which is coming, is flowing through us, and to a program that we recommended, and they approved, and that was the, to spend it, getting people off the street by putting them in apartments and so forth.
That was the Open Doors Coalition.
The Open Doors Coalition manages this money.
Right. Basically, basically, we received $272,000, as you said, that was the first installment a number of months back. And the second installment from the CARES Act, CARES Act allocation, the second round, if you will, was 722,000. So the total's almost a million, 994,000, and this is for the, to prevent and address the increased homelessness in Biloxi caused, associated with the COVID virus.
It's also to help with the rehabilitation of a building being used as a coordination resource center.
Right.
They, I was a little nervous when I first saw this, that they'd only spent 54,000 of the 272,000, but apparently they're ramping up that program, and they, they report that they plan on having to spend, being able to spend all that money before the end of the calendar year. There's not a requirement.
You got 272,000, and you put these people in apartments, so what do you do when the money runs out? You run them out?
I didn't understand your question.
You said you got 272,000 to put people in apartments, homeless people. So if you go walk up on the homeless people on the street, you put them in apartment for six months?
Well, they gotta wanna, gotta wanna be in an apartment.
That's what you said. You had to try to put homeless people in apartments.
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's what Open Doors Coalition is doing. They're, they're, they're meeting with homeless people who want to get out of, off the street, and putting them into temporary housing.
And that's gonna say, how long's that gonna last? I mean, you're gonna pay pretty people if they're in an apartment? Who pays for when the money runs out?
That's part of the grant. Who pays what?
After, I live in there for nine months. Okay, somebody gotta keep paying these apartment rent.
Yeah, it's not forever and ever.
With a signboard.
I don't know the terms of these leases. I know they're referred to as short-term leases, not forever and ever leases.
Watch your mouth around here, that's a bad word. Short-term.
Right, we're just the pass-through here, and if you want, I'll invite Open Doors Coalition in here to brief you on what they're doing, how many people they've, they've put in housing, and how many they've got on the list. Yeah, that 272,000 with 54,000 spent to date, put 25 households into apartments.
I've spoken with her the other day, and they've, they have identified an excess amount of funding, so they have a long-term plan. And just like Colonel said, the CEO said that they have a plan to move things forward. They talked about, I know that I worked with her with one individual, and with that one individual, they had a short-term plan for that individual, and also a long-term plan for that individual. And they've, to my knowledge, I believe they received another grant for a substantial amount of funding. So I believe that things are in place for them to continue to roll it out. And she actually came and spoke at our Rotary Club meeting last week, and talked about their long-term future and the things, so they're playing right now based on what I'm seeing four, five, six, seven years out now.
And I would assume we'll have to approve something in the future, some sort of agreement for these funds. Would that be accurate? I'm not, I'm not sure.
Don't know that CARES Act will be around at some point, there's, we have to find a funding source.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on item 5C? Mr. Demming, any other items?
I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, any items?
Yeah, oh no. And there's no wake zone, this would be F?
Yeah, the, you've previously approved our request to the county to establish, the processes, we go to the county and ask for a no-wake zone, the county goes to DMR and gets it approved. When the county went to DMR on this no-wake zone at the Pops Ferry Causeway, which is a very dangerous waterway, actually, the way boats speed through, through there, coming around the corner, and we really anxious to get a no-wake, no-wake zone approved. DMR agreed with the concept, but asked us to expand the area of the wet no-wake zone, so we're, all we're really doing is changing the no-wake zone to push it further out from the bridge.
Does it?
So our request for a no-wake zone is going back and amended to different dimensions than originally.
Well, they had like the size of a boat or anything to that matter, like a sea do, a 20-foot boat, or a 16-foot boat, so you, any boat, anything in the water has to do with.
Mm-hmm.
So we have, I mean, there's no size. Some boats don't, sea does don't create that much weight, some of these things, so I mean, you're talking about everything in the water now.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay.
We're not saying, it's a no-wake, it's a no-wake zone, it's not a, a wake zone for certain-sized boats, it's a no-wake zone. Any boat that goes through that, past that area has to throttle, throttle down and not push water in front of it.
And how do we control that?
And it will be enforced by DMR.
So they have people out there all the time?
Not my job to enforce it. They have to approve it, and then once they approve it, they have to enforce it. Now, this is not Front Beach, Councilman, you know, we're just talking about.
It's under the bridge.
Pops Ferry Bridge.
It's still, I don't care where you're at, it's still hard, hard to control that. I just, I know, under the bridge is probably good, that's where they hit the problems, that's where they have most of the problems from.
Mm-hmm.
You're checking that point.
Any other items, Mr. Lawrence?
No. And, ah, is this the one y'all looking at, ah? Where y'all hired the people for the?
Take H.
That's gone, yes, removed. Ace was removed. I said, ah, is that the one that you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay, right. That was the only ones I was checking on.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, any questions? Mr. Gans, any questions?
George got them all.
He usually does.
Yeah.
All right, I have, I have no questions. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Are there any exceptions? Mr. Glavine, any exceptions?
Yeah, exception to the no-wake zone.
Okay.
Not comfortable with it.
What if it's clete?
I'm okay if somebody's launching their boat, or whatever, I get it, the courtesy of it, but not, I'm just not.
All right, any exception, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir.
Exceptions, Mr. Demming? Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions? Ms. Newman, any exceptions? Mr. Gans?
None.
All right, great. That brings us to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Crell, thank you.
Item A on the agenda, Shirley A Balansich Estate, 1616 Hollywood Boulevard, this property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on the Shirley A Balansich Estate at 1616 Hollywood Boulevard? There being no one, this hearing is closed.
Item B, Edward R. Cohen, 2799 Christensen Drive, this property is still in violation.
Where's Christensen? Where is? Where's Christensen, where is Christensen Drive?
It's off of DeBee's Road, near Pass Road.
Well, that's embarrassing. That's in my ward, isn't it? Just, okay. Anyone here to speak on 2799 Christensen Drive? There being no one, that hearing is closed. We'll go to hearing C.
Andy Day, 396 Shell Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here?
The pictures, the pictures are out of order.
Okay.
The, the...
Is this the correct?
The Christensen, the, the Christensen actually had houses and sales. They were operating a business on it.
Okay.
This one... If we go back to the sign.
We'll take a moment and get them in order.
Item C zero, Brady Drive. Wait a minute, Brady Drive is not on here. Let's go back to 2799 Christensen. He assured me they were on there. Keith told me today.
I live right here.
Okay, we're having technical difficulties. We checked today, and we're assured that they were on there. But these are the old, these are old pictures.
Okay. So we, we were speaking of 396 Shell Street. Andy Day, is there anyone here to speak on that matter? All right, that, that hearing is concluded then. That brings us to the next hearing, item D, Mr. Creel.
Evan Pham Lu, 245 Benaki Avenue. This property is still in violation.
Is Evan Pham Lu or anyone else present to speak on the matter of 245 Benaki Avenue? There being no one, this hearing is closed. That brings us to the final hearing, hearing E.
Patricia Jane and Ralph Jones, 343 Forest Avenue. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on the matter of 343 Forest Avenue? Or Patricia James? Or Ralph Jones? Yes, Mr. Jones, I presume? Yes, please come forward. You can sit in front of the mics. And if, and to be sure, I'll get this for the clerk. You are Ralph Jones?
Yes, sir.
And do you reside at 343 Forest Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. What would you like to tell us?
I'm in the process. I am trying to better the properties. I own each, house on each side of me. The house to the south of me, 339, I had a tenant in there that was a real problem. And then when COVID come out, and they said I can't evict nobody, it really become a problem. So I not only not got, didn't draw rent from any of my properties for a year and a half, my wife got ill. And anyhow, I had to have her put in a hospital. And between the, the rental house to the south of me, he turned it into a trap house and selling drugs and Sanford and Son, turned the property into Sanford and Son for, I don't know what else to call it. I couldn't get him to clean it. I couldn't get it, get him out. I finally got him out. I am cleaning it. I've been told that I've missed hearings and stuff. My wife, apparently, my wife, God forgive me, lost her mind. She, she's in Whitfield right now.
If you give me a, a Ralph, if you give a 30-day extension, can you get it cleaned up in 30 days?
I'm doing the best I can, George. I'm working...
Say again?
I'm working every afternoon after work on it. I'm trying to get help. I'm doing everything I can. I mean, 30 days, I, I promise there'll be a lot of progress. I can't promise it'll be 100%. But I promise that y'all will...
All right. 30 days, we give you a 30-day extension.
All right, so there's a 30-day extension, motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Gines. Any further discussion on this property, 343 Forest Avenue? There being none, all in favor of the extension? All opposed? It's approved on a seven-o vote. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
You'd be given an additional 30 days, and if it's, if it's not satisfactorily cleaned up, you'll need to be back here in 30 days to see us again.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, that concludes all of our code enforcement hearings. That brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Some of...
By Mr. Gines. Second. We're, we're so close to the end. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I understand. All right, Mr. Gines, anything?
None.
Nothing, all right. Mr. Barrett, anything? All right, I'll bet Mr. Lawrence has something.
Well, we're just going to say, I don't know who's here to talk to, right? You tell them about any money coming down the pipeline?
93, and that's page three. That would be page four, another 40,000, I'm right on.
Appreciate that. It's always good news. Thank you.
All right, but we need mics when we can get them, so we can pick all that up. Any other questions on the routine agenda? All in favor? All opposed? It's approved on a six-o vote. That brings us to a motion for recess.
The move.
By Mr. Lawrence. A second by Mr. Gines. All in favor? All opposed? That's approved on a six-o vote. Thank you all. Good evening.